We have board and committee reports tonight, I have been informed. Who would like to go first? Alicia?
Um, no, you can let Eric go first.
Eric?
Thank you. I'm Eric Swan, Chairman Municipal Building Committee, 14 Old Farm Way. I'd just like to bring you up to date on what we're doing. The Municipal Building Committee held a meeting on Thursday morning. And at that meeting, several things became clear. One is that there's, the schedule is ticking ever faster between now and the April annual town meeting. We have that thing called the holidays in the middle of it, which kind of slows down progress and work. And so one of the things that we're working to do is set up a schedule that also keeps track of the Board of Selectmen meetings. And so what we're going to request is probably one or two joint meetings where the Board of Selectmen asks the Finance Committee, the Capital Planning Committee, the Planning Board, and the other Board and Committee of the Town to have a joint meeting so that they can be brought up to date on what the Municipal Building Committee is doing, what the project recommendation is forming and shaping up as, and that we can collectively come to agreement about what we're doing as we move forward.
We should probably do those in the evening, too, so it gives-
Yes.
...a room for attendance.
Yes, I know you have a busy schedule, but we should figure out how to do that. And once we work towards an update of the current project that report and assessment that we have, once we have a second opinion on cost, once the Municipal Building Committee then applies the soft costs to that project costs, and we have a project and a program and a schedule, we'd like to then be able to present that in maybe a joint meeting or another Saturday meeting, or some kind of way to, the big push, or half of the work, or maybe 90 percent of the work, is really getting what we have done now, again, out to the public in a way, in a greater way. Get more people aware of what's going on and why, so that when it comes up at annual town meeting, people aren't jumping up and trying to question things. And that, a couple of those items came up in our last meeting, like regional dispatch. And at this point, the Municipal Building Committee is focused on a building project. And, you know, we did field a lot of questions, we did try to organize and answer any and all questions, but I think now with the charge that you've given us, with the work that has been done and how we're building on that work, we'd like to focus on the building project and shape that up, give you a recommendation, and then be supportive of how that recommendation could be presented to the public. So, that's what we're up to. The Municipal Building Committee has a lot of work to do between now and the end of the year. And then, once we make the recommendation to you, we'll discuss how it's best to move forward with that recommendation, getting it out to the public, and then how the process for state-required laws of hiring an OPM and design or selection would work, should work, and can work.
All right.
Do you have any questions for me?
Eric, thanks.
Thank you again for everything you've done.
Yep, and for all the, absolutely all the time you've put into this. A member of the Board of Selectmen has a board and committee report. Alicia?
Yes. The media committee met last week, and one of the things that the media committee has been charged with is website design, or helping the Town with their website design. So, we would like to know what's, the media committee would like to help steer the process. I think, is there anybody in the Town that's looking at this now?
We just, we just executed a contract for the new web design. Susan Neuss had come in, I don't know, maybe four or five weeks ago, giving you an update on that.
Yeah.
We are going with, Virtual Town Hall is the name of the company.
Okay.
And actually, one of the things I was going to report, this evening, we now have Twitter, Facebook, and YouTube, so we're on social media now, the Town's webpage. So, that's progress for us. But certainly for design and content, we welcome, you know-
Yeah. Yep, so one of the, one of the, it's on the Town's website. Actually, I don't know when it was, whenever the media committee was formed, they were given a, a, what do you call it?
Charge.
A charge, yes. And one of the things is all, you know, electronic content. So, I know that everybody wears different hats here, and I know it's tough, and the media committee can definitely help, help her.
That would be great.
So, that's one thing. And the other thing, the other question that they had was, the media committee would like to move the annual town meeting to the Triton Auditorium rather than Newbury Elementary School for the acoustical reasons of when they record it on TV. Do you remember, you know how when we have town meeting in there, the feedback bounces off the walls, and everybody looks at Caleb, and poor Caleb's like, "I can't help it, it's just bouncing off all the walls." Well, that won't happen if we move it to Triton.
Why?
Because they have the sound system in there. They have the proper acoustics for it. So, I mean, we've never, I've never even thought about it before. It's not here. We'd probably have to schedule it with Triton. I'm not sure.
Well, we probably, it would probably need to really be thought of, I think, for, certainly everyone would want a better transmission or communication for the TV for town meeting. One of the benefits of the round school is it seems to be in the middle of the three boroughs, so, and, you know, and you always, I wouldn't want going to either Palm Island, if they had a place that was large enough, or over to Byfield, be the breaking factor if someone decided to go to town meeting. That might be totally subject on my part. But I think it's something we've got to think about. I mean, it might be something that wouldn't even be a factor.
Have you proposed it to Triton yet?
No, I'm just, we met, I come in here first.
So, they may say no.
Yeah, I'd be surprised if they said no. It would have to be a scheduling thing.
We can call and check availability and what the fee might be.
And we have to, I mean, look about logistics and all that other stuff, but-
Can we actually fit more people in the Triton Auditorium than the, or is there less?
Triton Auditorium holds about 1,200 people.
Now, that's going to be the sports auditorium with the wooden seats?
No, 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 the auditorium inside, where they have school plays.
Yep, that's right.
That's a good idea. We're moving the date.
Yeah.
Might as well move the meeting, too. What the heck?
I think if it, if it'll help the people that don't come to town, that watch it at home, I think if it will spout an interest, then, you know, it's come.
My only fear is, and it could be totally, you know, not founded, is sometimes we don't have a good attendance unless there's something terrifically controversial at town meetings.
Sit in a comfortable chair rather than a folding chair, cushioned seats.
Well, for people that are listening, give us some feedback.
Sure.
Give us a tweet.
Oh, yeah, we can tweet now.
You can always put dogs on the bell.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Town Administrator Report.
Okay.
Tweet tweet.
We have offered the Labor's Position to a young man named Jason Abram after conducting some interviews, so that will be filled as of November 23rd. Also, Marty, Joe, and I have gone through all of the resumes that were received for the Council on Aging Director's position, and we will be conducting those interviews beginning on November 17th. The hope is that we'll get someone in place, you know, a week or so before Marty leaves, so she can give them a good lay of the land training.
Anybody come forward yet?
I'm sorry?
Thanks.
Anybody come forward, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good, okay.
We've gone through probably about eight resumes, I think, we received.
Oh, wow. Nice.
Quite a few that were very qualified, so.
Good. And Marty's done at the end of the year?
December 24th.
Okay.
Yep. The sewer connection, I can't remember if I told you or not, but they'll be flicking the switch, so to speak, on Friday.
Yes.
So, hopefully, that'll be complete, any issues will be resolved then, there and then. And just, the trailers, you know, the clock's ticking on them. We've only got about seven months left, six to seven months. Ellen has been helping me with a project, getting quotes for office space. James, the DPW, James Surratt, the DPW Director, would love to see some of these removed prior to the winter season, if it was at all possible. That would require us going to the Finance Committee to seek reserve funds to pay for any rental fees, but I didn't know how you, you know, the board feels about that. The goal would be to get at least the Board of Health and Inspeccional Services some office space, and leave the other trailers where they are for now until the spring and a vote at town meeting.
Happened last, last, when I was first elected, they had, I thought the Board of Health was going to go to Georgetown, something happened.
It didn't work out. They felt it was too disruptive, that was why we moved them back over here and put them in the temporary trailer.
But was that space that was offered to us by Georgetown, was that-
That's their space.
Was that cost?
Georgetown's Board of Health.
Was there a cost associated to it?
Nope. That was the Board of Health Office in Georgetown, where they are also the health agents there.
Yeah. Well, maybe if they, I hate to, you know, no matter where they go, it's going to be disruptive. We're going to have to rent space. So, if it can be, you know, not cost the Town anything, I don't know if the option is still there. Grateful to the Town of Georgetown for even opening their doors to us.
It just, I think it was just also very inconvenient for our residents to have to travel to Georgetown for permitting.
Mm-hmm.
Understood. I think it was also access to their records.
Yeah, can they move everything with them?
Probably not.
Okay.
So, that's something we need to kind of keep on the radar. Sorry.
And was there some announcements about the updated communication system? Oh, you made it, totally.
Yep, that was it.
Who's doing all the tweeting and?
Susan.
She's going to do everything? Wow.
That's a lot of work.
And also, Eric mentioned earlier, the budget calendar. I did work with the Finance Committee. They gave a preliminary review of the budget calendar, starting really in December. So, I'll add on Municipal Building Committee and Capital Planning Committee, and then I'll get that out to all of you to take a look at.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Tracy. Under new business, we have to look at and review and approve and sign 2015 new business licenses as follows. There is one. Jan, are you here tonight?
Yes.
I figured that way. This is for Jan, Lori Flowers, 72 Newbury Port Turnpike, as a florist, that's the building on the corner?
Yeah.
Good, that's a good location. Want to tell us a little bit about it?
Yeah, I want to open a flower store and sell a few plants and flowers, and I've been doing it for 35 years. And I've been doing it on my own for probably five and a half years, and I think it's, I just need a bigger spot to operate out of.
Awesome. I went to the ribbon cutting of the yoga studio down the street from you, and you were highly recommended by everyone, so it was kind of nice. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any questions for Jan? All those in favor?
Aye.
Best wishes.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. These are now requests for public property use. The first one's going to be the Newbury, this is new on our revised agenda, guys, if you don't see it. It's a Newbury Girl Scout, Cub Scout Pack 44, and Boy Scout Troop 44 Veterans Day Ceremony on the Upper Green, Wednesday, November 11, 2015, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. They've done this before, right, Ellen?
Yeah.
This is nothing new, so.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Is anyone here from the Boy Scout or Girl Scouts? No, okay. Any discussion?
They could have waited a little longer, right? I mean, geez.
All those in favor? One-day local license, Byfield Community Arts Center, Local Lounge, Saturday, November 14, 2015, 7:30 to 10:30 p.m. Heidi, you're here. It's also a one-day local license for Byfield Community Arts Center, Local Lounge, Saturday, November 21, 2015, from 7:30 to 10:30 p.m., both being the same except for date.
Motion to approve both.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
This one takes a little more time, maybe, and a little more breadth of scope. Notice of intent to sell for other use, 2000, 255 High Road, Assessors Map, R-2764, owner William Hurley, trustees of WH Realty Trust, dated, and we have some revised statistics. It's in your packet, and if I understand this, this already has an offer for $500,000. It is a 61A, all 61As.
And a B.
Is it an A or a B? Is it, is it a B?
A.
It is A?
Yeah.
Oh, I stand corrected.
No, you're way back on the other one.
Okay.
This is the racetrack. So, all right, 61A racetrack, different location for what everyone might be thinking about, which we discussed down by the landing. It has an offer, I guess, so they're serious, so $500,000. We have to schedule a public hearing, Martha. If you want to get up and tell us, if you can, a little bit how we need to handle this. Thank you.
Yeah, there's an outline from Ginny Kramer, Town Council, in your packets, about the process that needs to be followed.
Yep.
And so basically, when a property's coming out of 61A, the Town has 121 days to exercise, or 120 days to exercise its right of first refusal. As Ellen noted in the agenda, we do have a revised notice, so the clock basically started ticking on November 3rd for this, so it'll be 120 days from then, which I think Ellen took to March, March 2nd.
Oh, we have time.
So, the Town can either vote to exercise its right of first refusal, or vote to assign its right to another entity, like a nonprofit, land conservation group, such as trustees of reservations, vote to refuse it, or there is a default provision, but Ginny doesn't recommend that you go that route. So, as part of the process, the Selectmen do need to have a public hearing. There's a whole lot of due diligence that needs to be done in order for the Board to actually make a recommendation, and that would include getting input from various boards and committees, and from any interested members of the public. So, one of the first steps would be to set a public hearing date, in which some of this information would start to come out, and then that public hearing could be continued as long as it needed to be.
So, is setting, needing to have some content from boards, is setting the day for a public hearing, let's say, the first, because of holidays coming up and things, and we, this one's close to Thanksgiving, I mean, is the first meeting in December a good time to start with a public hearing?
I would say that would be probably an appropriate time, December 8th, yeah.
And continue it if we need be, and we can probably get board and committee reports by then, too.
Right, and also get a butters. And I'm working with Ginny to find out exactly what form a notice needs to take, whether newspaper, notifying of butters, or whatever, so that will give us also time to sort that out.
Awesome. Once again, thank you so much, Martha. So, I guess our next step would be to make a motion to set the date for release of 21A property. Oh, yes.
I just want to introduce myself, and just, so I'm Paul.
Come on up to the microphone.
I'm Paul Burley, so.
Oh, okay, good.
William Hurley was my father, we owned the property. It's in his estate now, so actually, the buyers are here, or the potential buyers, I guess, I should say, here. So, I don't know if there's any questions, I mean, obviously, they were interested in getting the property and everything, so any issues or questions they might have that we can help kind of get this process going, I'm more than happy to, you know, answer or-
I think that's nice for us to understand, just for clarification. We have 121 days to look at it.
Twenty.
Huh?
120.
What'd they say?
21.
All right. Do we have the ability to hasten that process if we care to?
Sure.
We don't have to use the whole 120 days?
No.
So, I know Mr. Truand thinks they're going to want to probably hasten this with bad weather coming. So, if we found public hearing to be in order and everything in order, if we needed to, we could hasten this, because I'm sure the Hurleys want to, I mean, that's, that's, all right, just so, you know, we're not thinking we're going to wait too much.
All right, good. You know, as I said, we submitted a couple of weeks ago, and I guess there were questions about the dates that were on the purchase and sale, so it got bounced back, and actually, there was a lot of, my attorney, who's handling the estate, trying to figure out what we were required to do, and it took a little bit of time, so.
Yeah, we were a little confused, because we didn't think we even had to, Jim Connolly-
Talk, get right in there.
Jim Connolly didn't think that we had to even offer it to the Town for some reason.
Yeah, well, and he was wrong. The intent is, yeah, I guess he was, but, you know, the intent is to actually try to-
Yeah, yeah.
-maintain as much of a property.
Yeah, so I'm trying to, he's selling it to me in 61A. I'm going to remove it from 61A and break off the front barn and make a parcel of land behind it, and then the rest of it will be for my wife and myself, 11.2 acres of the 13, to go back into 61A.
So, the hearing is only for the pieces you're breaking off, right? The hearing's not for the whole lot?
The hearing's just to sell it, which I was thinking about.
All right, let's slow down, let's slow down. All right, that's a little different than, but it still has to come out of 61A. Town Council tells us it has to come out of 61A even to go back into 61A.
Correct.
Are we sure?
I'm 100 percent positive. We have the right of first refusal on the entire parcel.
Okay.
Yep.
Meaning the Town could buy it?
Yeah.
Correct.
That's always the way at 61A. That's the risk everyone runs, having their property in 61A.
All right.
So, we have to exercise that with clear avoidance, and then-
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
So, at that meeting on the 8th, those boards and committees would be invited in, as well as, you know, anyone who had an interest in it, to discuss the merits of the property, and whether or not it would make sense for the Town to purchase it. We'd have to match the bona fide offer.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, that's the way the process would work.
And it's been done, we've done it before.
Sure.
So, while moving it along at that date, at that meeting, it could even go up for a vote at that meeting, I think, so, yes.
December 8th?
December 8th.
Okay.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, motion to set December 8th at 7:15 for public hearing on Assessors Map, R-2764.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll see you then.
Thank you for getting up and speak. Old business. I don't know why they say that about you, Marshal. Mr. Marshal Jesmussen would like to have permission to make modifications, repairs to the barn. This was done when I was on the planning board, right?
Yes, it was.
Yeah. Have a shot and tell us what you're thinking.
Okay, what we have on Orchard Street, now it's Marsh Meadow Lane, is we have an old barn with an L off to the west side. We're looking at and planning to refurbish the main barn, but the L is beyond hope, in my opinion. I brought some pictures of what it-
Marshal, quickly explain to the board, because I should have, that it is under a building restriction, and we hold a restriction.
That's correct.
You guys probably might not, I'm sure you do know that, but anyway, all right.
And here are copies of it.
Thank you.
And that was my fault for not saying that in my prelude.
Look at page six, that's the part that pertains to the barn.
Okay, so, what we'd like to do is, as part of the rebuilding project, take down that L, which is in really rough shape, and we've got to jack up, put new sills, probably new foundation, under the regular barn. It's going to be, I think, a massive amount of work.
Yeah, it is.
But it, but it will preserve that building far into the future.
Didn't Damon already put a lot of work?
And what we're looking at is doing it right and finding the right piece.
Didn't Damon already put a lot of work into that?
Damon's put a lot of work into it, I put a lot of work into it, my brother-in-law's put a lot of work, you know, it's a barn, you know, you're patching it all the time. If you went underneath, you'd find, you know, there's probably 50 or 60 posts holding the barn up in different places.
Wow.
So-
So, the main barn's staying, this is just the L.
Yes.
So, have you seen this part of it? I'm sure, but you might have forgotten.
It's been a long time since I've seen it.
All right, look at this quick, Marshal.
Yep.
This is the only thing that, all right, and go to six and read Marsh Meadow Barn. And that would include the L, right, Martha?
Okay, Marsh Meadow Barn. Exterior of the barn, both sections, that's the L included.
Right.
If any portion of the barn is to be demolished, it must be further researched by the applicant or subsequent owner of Lot 6 to determine the age and history of the structure, and photographed for inclusion in the Newbury Historical Commission's archives of significant historical structures.
And now, is there any historical demolition delay going to come into effect? But I mean, if not, if Marshal follows this inclusive restriction that was in the covenants that we set forth in those building restrictions, he could actually make a decision on this matter.
And he could set that as a condition.
And if we did that as a condition, if the Board so chose, that would free him up to take down the L, because you're not going to take down the main barn, right?
No, no.
So, anyway, did I, is that clear to everyone? You get it, what we're saying?
Yeah.
So, anyway, that's for you guys to think about. Should we make a motion, and then we'll discuss it some more?
Sure. Motion to remove just the L on the historical barn.
And maybe keep some of these restrictions and covenants.
I don't know how else to put it. I went over and had a look at it.
Take a second, so we can discuss.
Okay, seconded.
All right. Any discussion?
Okay. Look at it. It's in super, super rough shape. The main barn-
From another guy that likes barns.
I more than like barns, it excites me that they're fixing the big barn, because that was Dan Brown's farm.
Yeah.
And I've heard stories over my life about Dan Brown and just some of the-
Folklore.
Yeah.
History.
So, it interests me in that way, but it'll definitely benefit from, I mean, the left wing, it's neat, but it's so far gone. If you took it apart and rebuilt it, I don't even know if you could call it. You know, I think it's the best thing.
Yeah, it really is rough. The sills are gone, it's sagging in parts. I do have some photos, if you'd care to look at them.
Take your word on it.
And we did photograph, and it is part of the record already, the whole barn. So, the L, the barn, inside and out, were photographed as part of this application, and so that exists with the town.
This is written up, and I'm not going to be a stickler, but these things get so complicated. Martha, this is an excerpt out of the building restriction that we okayed at the planning board level, this paragraph?
Yes, and that's the appendix to the building restriction.
And if you read that, if any portion of the barn is to be demolished, which would include, I guess, the wing.
Yes.
It must first be further researched by the applicant or subsequent owner of Lot 6 to determine the age and history of the structure, and photographed for inclusion in the Newbury Historical Commission's archives of significant historical structures. Who the hell, I was going to say, who the heck says that what Marshal already has is enough or not enough? What do we need to do to okay this tonight?
Well, I, first of all-
I know you want to do a good job on this, anyway, you know.
Well, it's, I'm not in a hurry to get it done tonight.
Okay.
Okay, it's not critical, because we don't have anybody lined up to take it down, or, you know, it's gonna be one whole project, we've got a long time to do this.
Okay.
The person, the only person I know of who has intimate, or more intimate knowledge of this barn is Kay down at Surf Land.
Isn't that wild, huh?
Yeah, she used to, she was related to the Browns and spent a lot of time there.
Wow.
So, she has been the source of a lot of the history of that place.
I'm smiling, Kay's always everything about everything.
I know it.
Huh.
And everyone probably as well. But be that as it may, I'd be happy to talk to her.
That'd be good.
And get any more facts, and if you want more photography done, we can easily do that.
Then that would, that sounds good, so...
She's very common sense, she'll say, yeah.
So that being said...
Does the Historical Commission have to get involved?
I was just gonna say, do we need to maybe table this and push it off, so you just get a hold of some of that information and tip off the Historic Commission?
Happy to do it.
Happy to do it, so, does that sound all right, Martha?
Their meeting on Thursday, this week, I think, so I don't know if there's...
Well, the intent, Marshall could get the intent to Channing or something, Channing's the chair, you know Channing, right?
I do not.
Channing lives right over on the corner, up from the dam, in that White House.
Okay.
Ames' old house.
And...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
He's good, but, you know, very accessible.
Okay.
So, should we maybe change the motion to table it to, Marshall puts together some of the information and goes to Historic Commission? Because it seems to me that's all that's needed by this, so...
So when are you hoping to do the work?
I think this work is not gonna get done until spring.
All right, cool.
All right, motion to table for further review. Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Marshall.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, sounds good. Peter?
Yes, sir.
We got something here, huh?
Yeah.
It's actually in the packet, they're actually asking us to sign it.
I know.
Wow, this is huge.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll fill the store, but...
Do you want to talk a little bit about this historic document we have in our hand? And you know something, let's be a positive note and say it's gonna fly through.
Okay.
I'm Peter Patino, I'm the chairman of the Fish Commission, and we have received a plan from the Division of Marine Fisheries for the selectmen to sign and mail back to them.
Two copies.
Two copies back to them, in Boston, I think, is where it's going to.
Yeah, Caraway Street.
So that they can have their director sign it, and then we should begin the end of the beginning.
Cool.
So that's where we're at, hopefully.
The beginning of the end.
Whatever, I don't know if we've gone that far.
Now, this is, what Peter's making allusions to is, anytime Marine Fisheries enters into opening up contaminated flats, they're probably always afraid that someone's gonna get sick from a contaminated clam, so they're always like trying to dot every I and every T.
I think you're being nicer than I would be. I have no idea why, but I feel that they've, you know, delayed and obstructed this process as absolutely as much as they can.
Is there something on your mind?
Well, I've invited Mike Hickey, and he is Shell Fish Program Manager for Division of Marine Fisheries.
Jeff Kennedy is under his...
And his team, Jeff Kennedy and Dave Roach, to come to a Fish Commissioners meeting, so that we can maybe get a better working relationship with them. I mailed them, him an invitation this morning, and I haven't heard back from him yet, and I hope that if he were to come, that the Board of Selectmen would attend the meeting also.
Thank you, so, so, what we have before us is something that'll move the process along no matter what, and that's a motion to sign the management plan that we have before us, that Peter and the board has worked on so intensively, the last time the flats was open was 1986, right?
Correct.
So this is a monumental document, so do I have a motion?
Yep, motion to sign Shell Fish Plan, Management Plan.
Second, anywhere?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Great.
So, we'll sign those right off, so you're gonna put them in the mail, or we are, right?
You guys own them.
All right, so we'll sign it after the meeting, sounds good. Thank you, Peter, for coming.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Well, thank you.
Wow, Lock and Mill Dam removal's back. We have the Lock and Mill Dam removal before us, we have some, we'll talk a little bit about it tonight, because that's probably why you guys are here, right? So, however, it's gonna be tabled because there's some financial information that is gonna be extended out this end, so we would be premature into really probably getting into it now, because we don't know some of the ramifications of the financial documents that we still have to review.
Yep, Ben Gehay can contacted us and asked if we could postpone a decision until the grant application was available, so he could, he'd know more information about matches, et cetera. It was, we had hoped to have it in November, but he said he doesn't expect it until December now.
Okay, and it's kind of funny, because this gives everyone, and Damon's not here tonight, which is another reason, but it gives everyone, if we choose to table this, the chance to maybe go home. The item still bears certain contention, so some folks maybe want to do a little homework when they go home and try to understand the folks that maybe not were on this board before. Very quickly, should we make a motion to table? Well, no, because then we won't have discussing, let's discuss this a little bit. Very quickly, I was on the board before when we chose not to do it. At this level, having gone through what I went through before and all the research that's been done, and some of the research that I know, and some of the things I've learned since then with the work that related, that I'm involved with in the MASH, I kind of think that it's maybe the time to take the dam out, if it's of minimal or very little cost to us, and the chances are getting, the only thing that scares me is the chances are getting thinner and thinner of taking the dam out, because there's so many other towns that have dams that they want to take out. So that being said, Chuck, I know you have some thoughts on it, and then anyone else in our board that might want to talk real quick, and Marlene, if you want to get up and say a few words, Chuck, what were you...
My only concern is Byfield Water's concern, they are deeply concerned about contamination in their well downstream, I believe it's 900 feet away, and they have just put a new well in. Now, it is a very deep well, it is a bedrock well, I believe is what they call it, but still, they're very, very concerned with contamination, so that's something I have to pay attention to, and I'm kind of caught in the middle, I guess some very good people telling me it needs to come down, and some very good people saying, no, it needs to stay, so I'm kind of smack dab in the middle here.
So, for people that are watching on TV, it's good to know some of the issues that we have as selectmen to think about. JR, have you been approached, or any thinking that you have?
No, I think it's right for the river, it's a bedrock well, when I go down there, I see the level of the stagnant standing water, it's damn near as high as the wells, and that's surface water, is not good drinking water. But, anyone who would like to explain to me why this is a bad idea, feel free to email me, or stop by the farm stand if I'm not there, leave a message, and I'm more than happy to talk to you about it.
Can I ask for more than that, Alicia?
Yeah, I, I, I'll be honest with you, I haven't really, I don't know too much about it, but I will get myself up to speed with it.
Yeah.
Again, anybody interested can contact me through the Town Selectment, they can forward it to me.
So I think it's almost a blessing in disguise that we've tabled it, you know, some of the documents weren't aligned, so we can all come up to speed, and Damon, you're gonna do your homework too, he's not there yet, I'm talking to him up there. Now, would you like to speak at all on the dam? Marlene, go ahead. Marlene's been involved in Parker River Clean Water for a very long time, and been involved in this issue for a long time, so...
First, I think I'd like to back, go back a couple years when the engineering study was done. Obviously, Chuck, one of the most important things to all of us is the quality of drinking water, and I think as the engineers studied this, that was one of the things that was very much in their mind, I don't think they would have made any recommendation knowing the implications of, that could have been if it had some connection to the quality of water. Now that they have a deep water, deep water, well, thank you, not a deep water dam, a deep water well, at the meeting that JR and a number of us attended just a week or two ago, there was JR, myself, Tracy, Concom Chair, what's his name, Hutchins from the...
Eric Hutchins.
Eric, Ben, and who else was there?
Tim Purinton.
Tim, right there, all talking, there's not a person at that table that would have any way wanted anything to happen to that, and they were very clear that with this deep water well, there literally is no geological hydraulic connection between the two sets of waters, it just is not. The well is very deep, this is superficial water that's going down, so I think that if you look at things carefully, we would be able to remove that from our minds, and the other, the other point I was going to say, when that engineering study was done, I believe that it was about the most thorough and also expensive engineering study that had been done in all the potential dams that are up for removal in Massachusetts, so it wasn't just a casual job, it was very thorough. Somewhere we have that executive summary, I wonder if that could be put online for people to read?
Sure.
That, I think, would help to ease their mind, there's some very good illustrations in that.
Send it to me.
What?
I didn't know, I'm asking her to send it to me.
Yes, it's in electronic form as well, so I certainly hope that as people think about this, they'll think about the benefits that go along with this without the fears of water. I would, I would be the last person that would want any threat to water at all.
I think, Marlene, one of the problems that surfaced around the whole issue for us was that somewhere along the line, DMF is gonna get more serious about enforcing fish ladder regulations.
They're being nice to us.
They'd be, well, they're kind of being nice to a lot of people in the state right now, but very soon, they probably won't be, now that our councils are starting to, I mean, it was pretty hard to be mean when our council was so low, but it's starting to change now, so, I mean, maybe the dam wouldn't need to be taken out if someone wants to come up with a plan to put $60,000 or $70,000 into the fish ladder and maintain it for the rest of time, but that's probably not gonna happen either.
Do you humorously recall one of the times we were discussing this, and somebody that was not happy about that idea, Dave Mountain suggested to them, would they like to buy it?
Yeah, yeah.
So, we as a town, I know we're responsible for both the dam and the fish ladder.
Well, I mean, we own the property, and some people, it has come up for discussion that, you know, we have, our River Protection Act has been enhanced to 300 feet, right?
In that area.
And Massachusetts River Protection Act is 200 feet, right? So, but I'm not even sure, 200 feet probably takes that lot out for building, I should think.
It goes beyond the property line.
All right, because some people have thought that the dam enhances the ability for us to maybe sell that piece of property, but I don't think we have setbacks.
Not, even if that, not when they look at the fact that they're now responsible for taking care of it.
Yeah, so that's kind of a catch 22.
And I wanted to point out, on another note, JR mentioned historic things, at the meeting, we also discussed the fact that we lost the very historic mill that was there, and some of the machinery has been kept, and this would make a very good recognition of the historical importance. Sometimes, some of the machinery can even be displayed, I don't know what the condition of this is, but surely we could have, you know, a plaque and something or other identifying this. I know David Mountain told me that there was something very unique about that machinery, and if he had been able to find funding, he was hoping that it would end up in the Smithsonian, so...
It's funny, the whole mill almost went to the Smithsonian, they almost, they almost took the whole mill apart, but funding fell through, so...
That's what they call a fine grist mill, and it was quite a set of machinery in there.
That's so, I've been told, but I think this gives us time for the people that do have concerns, to realize that our water is indeed protected, where Parker River is quite concerned about the water in the river, we're running dry, you know, when it's .5 CFS cubic feet per second of water, that's basically nothing, we need to think about that in terms of recharge and everything else for that area.
Thank you, Marlene.
Thanks, Marlene. Correspondence, I didn't see any. Review of meeting minutes, October 27th, has everyone read them?
Uh, Jeff?
Oh, yes.
We did vote to table, yeah?
Oh, very good, motion to table.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
No correspondence? Seeing none? Review of meeting minutes on October 27th, did everyone get a chance to read them?
Motion to approve is read.
Entertained.
Seconded.
From anyone? Good, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have a motion for warrants to be signed? Do we have warrants? We need a motion for signing warrants.
Motion to sign warrants.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any meeting updates? Anyone go to a meeting? Seeing none, are hearing none, executive session, I know there's none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right, let's hold it off for a while.
Aye.